Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mizouni?
Here.
Councilmember Parham?
Present.
Councilmember Tavallaro?
Here.
Mayor Palfini?
And I am here. Anybody want to make any changes to the agenda or are we going to go as written? Item three. No changes? Okay. Do I need to make a motion for that?
I think we leave the agenda as it is.
All in favor? Aye. Now's the time for non-agenda public comment. We do have some folks out in the audience. Now's the time if it's a matter for the council to entertain, we will hear it. We cannot take any action on it, but the council can order it for another session. Any takers? Hmm? Okay. Any...oh, we do have folks out there. Well, you want to come speak for long-term recovery or...
Yeah, just general.
Go ahead. Come on up. Name and address.
Sure. Paul Morton, 21307 Old Highway 99 Gazelle. Most even know me, but I'll introduce myself. Paul Morton, I've been hired by the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative to help the Bowles Fire victims, excuse me, the Mill Fire Victims Survivors. Many of the survivors have asked me to come before you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, to ask about and to get information on the delayed progress of the infrastructure. Granted, I am trying to catch up on this. I didn't come until July and kind of learning as I go here. As an example of a reference for me, when I was the building inspector for the City of Weed from December of 2014 until, I think, July of 17, I oversaw roughly 60 to 70 homes, rebuilds, a couple of churches, community center, quite a bit going on. I was really busy, so I didn't get to, I didn't get to know the public work side of it much in terms of the infrastructure. But what I can say is everything was in place. There wasn't one hiccup in terms of finally finalizing a home. Everything was there. I had no issues there. As a matter of fact, if my memory serves me correct, Mr. Brown over in Angel Valley, I filed his home five months after the fire. Was it nine months? Okay. And again, everything was in place except for curb and gutter sidewalk, but that's a non-issue for the builders, for the homeowners at this point. So currently, there is, having talked to a builder, there is one home that's ready to be finalized and it can't be finalized. There's no infrastructure. There's no power, water, phone. There may be water, but there's no power. It's not a good look for the city. And there are two homes that will be ready within a month based on those builders talking to me. So that's three homes that have been waiting and to be finalized, and that's a tough thing to do when you lose everything and you are going to be ready to move in, but the government and the entities that it's working with, in my opinion, haven't done their job, been dragging their feet. So the survivors have asked me to come before you to ask what took so long? Who or what delay, who or what delayed the project? Again, I just asked you to put yourself in their shoes. They're just trying to get on with their lives and I totally get that. I feel for them, having talked with many of them. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for some...
Keep going.
Okay. I'm asking for some accountability from the government, local government, the City of Weed and their partners in this project, maybe some emails, some documentations to clear up any misunderstandings or gray areas that survivors have because there's a lot of mistrust out there with regard to looking at the government. So I just wanted to bring that forth and let you know that I realize that there's work being done now, but that's 13 months after the fact and we didn't have this issue at all with the Bowles Fire. So thank you for listening to me and I'll step aside.
Thank you very much. I think...
Can I say anything?
Yeah, you want to say something? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I'm wearing those shoes.
I know you are.
Okay. I'm wearing those shoes. In 2014, we didn't have to go underground infrastructure. It wasn't, that wasn't happening. So the infrastructure as far as power, it went back up. It was up within six weeks. Because that's why we had everything closed down. And I asked this exact question to the city staff probably a month ago, and I did not realize it, but OES was sitting in this building. OES set up an office in this building and, right? Do you remember that? They were here.
I don't remember that. Was that after December of 14, 2014?
It was after the Bowles Fire.
It was before that.
They were here. They were here and they were jumping at everything we asked because if you recall, our fire was one of the first ones, which was why our long-term recovery group was one of the first long-term recovery groups with the exception of tornadoes in Kansas. But as far as fire, it was one of the first groups that was out there. So, and the other thing that on a personal basis I've seen is that this was not a city fire. The first one was the city and it was all the city. Pardon me, Rick, don't get offended. It was the county and there was a lot of things that happened that I was asking questions because I was, I'd been there and they weren't getting answered. Well, it was a county fire. Well, the county's doing it and the county's doing that. So we had no control of it. The city had no control over a lot of things. For one, the fact that when a lot got cleared, mine for an example, I mean, I went and got it cleared and it was all good to go. I got a, I got a piece of paper that said that. The county had those papers allegedly and wasn't giving it to us as in the city. I wasn't on the council at the time. They weren't giving, in this fire, they weren't giving it to the city. They were keeping it for themselves. I don't know what happened, nor were the people getting it. So the city can't go onto their property to start doing infrastructure things without their permission.
Permission.
Well, the city can't go there if they don't have the okay that it's been cleaned up. So we lost control of it because it was a county fire. Started in the county, went through the city, ended in the county. So it was a county incident versus the first fire that was a city incident where we had control. So that's the biggest thing that I see in it is we didn't have control and then when we wanted to do things, you can't just go on to people. It's, we're America. One of my favorite statements, this is America. You can't just go on people's property and start doing things. You've got to get it cleared that it was cleaned, that it was, that everything was done. Our city never got that information. We had to ask for it a couple council meetings ago.
I'm sorry. So when I came on board in December of 2014, first thing I was told to look at was to make sure OES and all the lots were clean, basically, make sure all the paperwork is in place.
And was it?
Yes, it was.
Where was it? Was it with county?
No, no, he's talking about 14.
It was in my office. The information...
Oh, in 14?
In 14.
Yeah, in 14. Sure, it was, it was done. Here, there was nothing in December. There was nothing in January, February, or March. Somebody stopped me. When did we finally get, March, April?
Oh, no.
April, May?
It was more like the summer, like July.
When we finally got the fact that, oh, well, those lots have been cleared and there's paperwork, they're done. Well, when did that happen? Oh, December, November?
Huh.
Well, you didn't know anything about it.
Right, nor do I. That's news to me.
Thank you.
So there was some lax of communication and I think there's, I think what Sue is trying to explain is that this incident is much different from the Bowles, from the Bowles Fire. The Mill Fire was county-born, county-ended, OES locally. I would probably say they also had some changes going on at OES. There was a lot of new faces at OES from what I recall on this particular incident. Not to give everybody excuses, but there are learning curves. We did not get clearances, as she has stated. We have pressed as far as, I think we can press. Could we have done a better job? All of us could do a better job. I would probably not disagree with that. Right now, things are moving fairly quickly. I don't know how far along we are, but I know we should, I would agree with the fact that we should have been ready. We promised those folks that we would be ready. We've had delays not only from the county, but we've also had delays from, not from Pacific Power necessarily, but in the partnership with Pacific Power, AT&amp;T, and Vive, where even to the last minute where we've been chomping at the bit to break ground so that we can put all of the power lines and everything underground, Vive pulled out at midnight hour, literally, not figuratively, literally. So those are kind of things that weren't anticipated. Luckily, we were able to convince, actually, AT&amp;T, actually, kudos to them, they stepped up and said that they would provide broadband cable and they would lay, they already, they always have the habit of laying two lines anyway, so now they're utilizing both of them. So that turned out to be a very good procedural moment for us.
And the underground utility district is not a city-funded job, a specific power. They're the ones that went out for bid, all those things. There was a lot of infighting going on. We were on, every two weeks, the entities that were there were fighting over cost and this and that and delay after delay after delay. Trust me, I, at multiple times, jumped in the middle of it and said, I'm tired of listening to excuses. I want action. I mean, Chris was on those calls, Sandy, Craig was on those calls. We were fed up with it. To your point that this is the reason it's holding up all the construction is false. That is not, hold on, let me finish, Paul. These accusations have come out before and I've explained it several times. If you look at the number of, set of plans that have been submitted to the city, it is very, very, very low. And we have told folks from the get-go, get your plans in, get your plans in, because that could be a couple of months right there. The water relocation is in the, right in the middle of getting that finished. The individual that you're speaking about that has the house that's ready and I'm going to say probably pretty soon he'll have power. So that's, that's one. He's the only one, I think, ready of the eight plans that we've had submitted. I believe, is it four or six of them that have been approved? Six have been approved. So it, we've been telling folks all along to do that. So that project will probably be done in a couple of weeks. The water line will be done in a couple of weeks. The power, they're starting on that side, so I'm assuming that, you know, that's going to happen fairly quickly too. So I understand everybody's frustration, but let me explain something else to you, Paul. In 2014, Craig Sharp was the Public Works Director at the time. OES had an office in here and we're literally writing checks, millions of dollars worth of checks through here. Do you know how much we've gotten from OES? Do you know?
I do not know.
$64,000 so far. We had been, we just had a come to Jesus with them the last couple of days too because they've got a young man who is the first, this is his very first disaster that he's worked with. They have been out here like, what, three or four times, Chris? Every time they come out, we walk with them, we talk with them, we say, when are we going to get our money? And then they delay, delay, and they have excuses about, and I understand, right after our fire in September of '22, there were multiple other fires, there were flood events up and down the coast. Those resources got pulled. As the mayor just said a few moments ago, we had some OES county folks that were here that, you know, it was their, some of them, their very first big event that they worked and I'm not throwing the county under the bus, they were helpful, but there was a lot of issues in that too. So, you know, as the city manager, I take exception to some of the things that you just said because there has not been, I mean, and this body up here has been here pretty much the entire time and they understand the frustrations too. So we have, we have worked diligently with OES, Roseburg, Pacific Power, Vive, AT&amp;T, and worked with getting the water line relocation finished as well. This has not been an easy or a typical recovery effort, I guess you could say. And a lot of it had to do with funding. I mean, everybody assumes that the city's just got millions and millions sitting around for, for stuff like this. We don't. And we just settled with Roseburg just recently, a couple of months ago. So we are working, our tails off. Our goal was to get the water line on Wakefield and Alameda finished and then get the underground district done. I've been told that, that those two will be done, you know, probably not as soon as some people, there's the one gentleman that has the house ready, but we are working to get those things done. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff being tore up.
I want to stop. We're kind of rolling on a bit, but I would just like to end with...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
One second though. From John in the back, could you tell me if there've been any occupancy permits issued at this point in time?
There were not.
And so we don't have a house that's ready to occupy?
Correct.
That's correct. So I get it. We have, I would, I have to say, I sit in on those meetings, Paul. I have been vacant a little bit because there is a lack of motion and I wouldn't blame it completely. There are issues that we've explained here real quickly, but there's also a lack of motion on the survivor group. And I don't want to, I haven't gone through the ordeal. It's a big ordeal. Sue has gone through the rebuilding process. Hell, it takes me two months just to figure out what color to paint my house. So I get a point of getting things done, but I understand they're frustrated, but I'm not quite sure on the accusatorial thing about us being lacking. That kind of does bother me a bit, but I'll let that go. Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, Paul, first of all, Paul, I want to thank you for stepping up, speaking for the people. I've also have, you know, exactly what you're talking of. They've asked me, or certain people have asked me for a long time. And I got to say this, to the council and to everybody, is that, you know, the fact is, we did tell those people all along, hey, we're going to be ready, we're going to be ready, we're going to be ready. And what, dragging the feet, I mean, it was, what happened with the, just for the certificate, we're talking about the delay on the certificate. When we finally found out that certificates were ready, there was some garbage about, they'd been ready for four or five months.
Yeah.
We, four or five months and we, this time, journeying, we're making lists, we're working our butts off trying to figure out, you know, how to get this thing moving and the thing, everything was ready. That four or five months set us back and from that point on, I mean, it is as if, you know, our hands are tied, we're leaning on Tim saying, Tim, you said this, you know, and we went out and we said, we said it, but it became out of our, out of our hands.
I've even called...
I mean, and I think that they have every right to be, hold us responsible for it because we're the ones that, you know, are supposed to be able to handle this, but at the same time, we have some issues that, that hopefully were, there was a remedy as far as the lack of communication with city and county because that really was a, you remember, I think you were on board when we finally found out that certificates were ready?
Yes.
And, do you recall how long that was? That was four or five months?
It was a long time, but I couldn't tell you the...
It was, it was May of, I just pulled the emails. We found out at the May council meeting, so October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, eight months later.
Eight months. Eight months and that soaked everything down. We're all waiting for it. Everybody's waiting for the certificate.
And she said, Rachel came up and said, I've got mine in January.
Yes.
And I said, January? So this staff here is going to do a great job in doing that. I'm friends with almost all the folks that live there. And they're frustrated and I completely understand that.
We are too.
This is county.
But also, they have not moved forward either. I want to say that there's mutual issues here. One of the other things is that, I don't want to throw OES locally under the bus either completely. Cal OES has been dragging their feet really slowly. I don't know if it's lack of the budget in, at the state level. I do not know what the issue is. I have personally called them twice. I know Tim has called them a number of times and they make a promise, but they don't follow through on the promise. Funding, they have not given us squat. I will tell you in the Bowles Fire, through all of the agencies, the City of Weed, I know exceeded $26 million. I guess we were lucky to be first. That's all I can think of about on that scenario because as Tim has explained, we, I think the county OES with the cleanup probably spent a lot more than, it's probably been the biggest boon as far as getting, the cleanup was expensive. It always is, but that also drug its feet because of a long winter. It drug its feet because of two other, of another event up at the north side and the south side. They were trying to work both at the same time. But, but no more excuses. I do think that it's done.
I understand this is, this is an important and an emotional topic, but we are limited to brief responses to public comments.
Oh, it's a public comment.
If you would like to ask...
Okay. So we hear you, we will take an action against it. Goodbye.
No, no.
Can I just make a point to Mr. Rundell and yourself, Mr. Mayor? That I, we've talked privately about the, the lack of stepping forward with the construction. I want you to know that I've also been pushing them to get started in the construction. That's one of my things. I've been pushing them, telling them, don't wait for the infrastructure, let's get going. So...
And we don't have an occupancy permit. That was why I asked the question. So, so yes, we're behind, but we're all kind of behind a little bit.
Thanks for, thanks for...
Thanks, Paul, thanks for, thanks for being brave enough to stand there. Appreciate it. Okay. Onto item number five, council member announcements, meetings. Any more comment or questions from the audience?
Yes, that's...
Okay. Onto council member announcements, meetings, reports, and comments. Bob, you want to start us off?
Uh, no, not ready right now. Go ahead.
Okay. Sue, you ready?
I think ready.
Okay, Sue's ready. Go for it, Sue.
Um, I might say something that you guys were going to say, but that's, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, October 28th, from 9:00 to 4:00 is Free Dump Day Household Waste at Blackview and up in Puerto Rico, but it's at Blackview. The circus, the circus is in town over at Bellar Park and I hope that the count, people in the county will come. It's a acrobatic circus. You can look it up online and it talks about where they go and what they do. And I did have somebody today say to me, oh, it's too expensive. And I said, hmm, reread what you said. They said, a ticket is $85. And I said, you need to go back and reread it because that's for like a table of six. So look at the website and the tickets and I hope that, you know, people say there's nothing that ever happens in our county or in our towns and that the people in the county will support this so we can have more things like this. Over at the library, there is a, is it, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, Osage County? Osage County, or Osage, at Native American Display, there's a movie coming out on October 20th and there's a local woman whose family was involved in that in the early 1900s. And she has gotten together with another local woman who writes children's books and they have a beautiful display over here at the library that tells from the beginning, from the beginning of the Osage Nation to her family, to the movie. And it was, she came and spoke at Rotary Today and it was, it was amazing. I need to go over and finish looking at the display. And then I also got to go to, because everybody paid for it, I got to go to Cal Cities Conference, which was very good. They had a couple keynote speakers that were very interesting to listen to. And yeah, I just, I went to lots of different classes that I need to share with our city staff. And then the last thing is, if, for everybody that lives in Weed, our Weed High School football team, the Varsity Football Team's doing quite well this year. And tomorrow night at 5:30 JV, 7:30 Varsity is their final home game, with the exception of that they'll have a playoff game. And so I encourage everybody to come out and watch because they're doing a great job this year.
What's your record?
Five and one. They've only lost one game. And they'll get a chance to replay them and they won't lose a second time.
Is that AMS?
Hmm?
Is it no chance?
No. Oh, no.
Who'd they lose to?
They lost to Fall River.
Oh, Fall River, okay.
Beat Monchassas, 64 to...
No, they didn't, did they?
Zero, yeah.
Holy, they deleted.
They're getting a lot of 50 to zero games.
Daryl?
Well, I'd like to thank the City of Tulley Lake for hosting all of us at the League of Local Agencies meeting last night. It was very informative as always and a good time for us to meet with other city staff and council members and take away some things we can bring back to the City of Weed that we can implement here for the good of our people. My big thing is I want to remind everybody about trunk or treat on October 28th. It's going to be a free event here downtown Main Street hosted by the Chamber of Commerce where kids can go and safely go through and trick or treat with all the different participants to decorate their, their cars and their businesses. So it's been very successful in the past and hope to see a lot of people out enjoying that safe event this, this coming 28th.
Thanks, Daryl. You guys?
Yes. Briefly, I also went to the League of Cities meeting with Sue and some of the things that we were, meetings that I went to, one was the, it was the Tale of Two Cities, mental health crisis. Talked, what they really talked about, especially in rural areas, mental health help, it doesn't really exist here. It takes so long for anything to, you know, we're so spread out and it's something that we should start thinking about trying to, and there are companies that come in and streamline, but also just streamline the process to, to get somebody some help before it's too late. The, it was, it was pretty informative. Also, there was a meeting regarding how to handle hate in the meetings. One thing, we don't have much hate up here, but there are some, you know, in larger cities, there were some stories about some pretty serious situations where, where the hate came into the city council meetings and that, that was, that was good. Another one that I really enjoyed was the, excuse me, it was the Minority Leaders Reshaping Local Governments. They actually had, they had a panel of four women. Two happened to be Armenian and one with Armenian descent and one was a Hispanic and one was from black culture. And, and the, it was a panel, but it was basically talking about, you know, the minorities, but it was also talking about just being a woman in, in, these women happened to be city managers and vice-city manager. And it was really informative to start listening to somebody else's side about, especially women in power positions. And it was, it was, it was great and it's something that we all should be thinking about that, you know, it's not just cut, you know, you look at somebody doing a job and you think, ah, but there's a whole bunch of things to go with if you happen to be a minority, if you happen to be a woman. It's, it's, it's quite, it's different. It's different. And that's about all I have other than, I think that what, at our county meeting, at the Lola meeting last night, it was pretty obvious, there are a lot of things happening in our community. One of the things that was brought up again was to start the Siskiyou County Revitalization Program that we had going when we were, before the...
COVID.
COVID. And one of the things that we shared, I mean, we talked about it a little bit, is about what we, the work that we did before. We had a group of people that started looking at the county, what was available in the county. And one of my, the group that I was with was... The group that I was with was equestrian, which I know nothing, very little about horses. But we found, I think, something like 42 different events and places that actually have equestrian businesses. And then it went into fishing. It went into all the different things that are in our county that we don't even... We don't know about that's going on. And trying to get that wrapped up again, I think, is a real positive thing because like it or not, it's not Weed against Mount Shast or Whitey Weed again. It's a county, Siskiyou County. There's 45,000, 47,000 of us. And some efforts are being made to try to pull people together, and I think it's all good. Thank you.
Mark?
Less than two minutes. Just kidding. I doubt it. But anyway, I just want to know like how the Measure O committee's going with the Rec Department, you know? If something like that, if we can get an update at some point. And the other was also the downtown, but apparently we're going to be discussing something like that tonight a little bit later. And I'm assuming that you have a report or something that you're going to talk about the fire department?
Yeah, he gave us a paper on here.
Okay, that's all. And that was... I just want to make sure that was what is on the agenda. But that's it. We need to do something about the downtown area. We need to get those buildings taken care of, and so we'll obviously dive deeper in it tonight. And I just kind of wonder what's going on with the Rec Department and the Measure O. I know they've had meetings. And the last thing, I'd like that someone verify, who is in charge of the Heritage Park? Who's in charge of that Heritage Park? It's not the community center.
No, it's...
It's not the Rec Department. Okay, well, I've been getting, you know, some "back us, not us, it's them," and so... I just wanted to know.
It is city property, and the community center's staff does the... What for short of a term, mow and blow type of thing. So, they maintain it.
Right.
Yeah. Is that right?
That's it.
Okay.
Because I was approached saying, "Hey, it's not ours, it's theirs." I thought it was a city, so...
It's a city.
That cleared.
It was a vacant lot, so...
Okay, that's it.
I will say that I also was at the Lola meeting. Just to run that down briefly, it is interesting to find all the communities' activities that are going on and to beg, borrow, or steal if it fits our community. Don't need to reinvent anything if it's already been done. That kind of piggybacks onto the SRN is that the fact that there's a lot of things in our neighborhood that have been done and tried.
SRN?
SRN, excuse me, yeah. Siskiyou Revitalization Network.
Not everybody knows that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to speak in an acronym. The Revitalization Network was a very important piece on... We did a couple little things. One was First Impressions, which we did when we revisited... We visited every city, every community, visited a different city and gave a first impression through little darts at everybody. It was meant to criticize and critique in a beneficial way. Okay? So, the second part we did was three things to do in every community, and that's where Bob came up with the equestrian issues. But we designed a map on tying all sorts of events and activities throughout the county, from trails to equestrian to rodeos even. So, there was quite a few little things. So, I think rejoining that would be a good effort. Regarding his mental health comment, part of the Resource Center's objective is preventative on mental health. I think Bob was talking about probably the...
Crisis.
The Crisis Center, which he indeed is correct, that there is a lack... There's a lack of facilities here, and there's a lack of funding in the state. So, if you combine both of those, it doesn't make... Bode well for Siskiyou County.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Last night, prior to the League of Local Agencies Lola meeting, they had a tour of the Wildlife Center. Is that what it is, John? They have a new one that they've built. The old one was condemned, and they got money from the federal government to build a new one. It's not open yet. They're hoping by the middle of November. I knew nothing about it, but it has to do with all the wildlife that should be and the waterfowl and whatnot that should be out there in Tulley Lake. And it was fascinating. And the gentleman that's in charge of it, his main thing about the whole place is education. He wants to educate the people in the community and outside of the community about the area that they're from. So, I'm actually looking forward to probably next spring, trying to go over there and figure out what it is. But I liked it.
And Siskiyou Revitalization Network, to end this, is something that explores all of what Siskiyou County has to offer. It's an immense county with... If you like your environment, like I do, that's the reason I live here, is to explore the rivers, the lakes, the mountains. It's a... Probably one of the most spectacular regions in California. So, hopefully, the Siskiyou Revitalization Network... I like tourism. I don't like ultra-tourism, however, but I don't want to become Yosemite. Okay, sorry. Let's move on to presentations, first five. And thank you guys for being patient. First Five's Proclamation of the 16th Annual Read Across America. We have our guest here. Hi, Michelle.
So, we chose the book Pig the Winner this year. My name is Michelle O'Gorman, and I'm the Executive Director for Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative. And I'm here representing First Five and our partnership. One day per year, we take... This is our 16th annual event. We take a book into the schools and every daycare and every Family Resource Center and try to reach every child that we can, ages zero to five, with a book. Reading that book to the children, giving that book for them to take home, having some information in it. So, anyway, this is just a little bit of a pamphlet about the things that First Five does in our community. We're all about the zero to fives. We always want to say read, sing, play every day. It's so important for the development, as we know, of brains from the ages of zero to five. And if we can give them a good foundation right out the gate, there'll be much better outcomes later on in life. So, that's a little bit about what we do. Do you want me to read this, or are you going to do it?
If you want to, by all means.
I'll let you do the "therefore."
Save me.
I can do the "whereas's." Oops. I'll hold it out here.
Do you want my glasses?
No, I have some on my head. Thank you.
They're on your head.
So, this is the proclamation of the 16th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event, sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiyou, in partnership with Siskiyou County Library and the Family and Community Resource Centers, dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy by providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events throughout Siskiyou County on the same day and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. You want to do the "therefore"? I'll let you do the "therefore."
Okay, thank you. Therefore, the city of Weed hereby proclaims November 8th, 2023, as the 16th anniversary of Read Across America. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success. Signed, the mayor.
I have one for you to sign. That's a... It's a nicer copy. It's a cardstock copy. But if anybody here would like to read to children on that day, Karen Potts' email is inside that folder. She'd be the one to contact for that. She couldn't make it today. She had a conflicting meeting, so... But she did want you to know that she loves to have... It's kind of like a celebrity guest reader that comes in and reads to the children and then gives out this book. So, we love that about it.
I do it every year.
Yeah. It's a fun, fun, fun thing to do.
So, anybody wants to read, any of the staff, if you guys want to read? I think it's just nice to bring ourselves forward to the community. I mean, we sit up here on a podium that probably only 15% of our lucky walk is paying attention, so...
Is it kindergarten and under?
Yes, yes.
First graders don't?
No, not usually reaching up into the first grade, sixth and under.
And we also do through Siskiyou Resource Collaborative, Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, the Dolly Parton Library.
Yes.
So, if you're interested in getting your young children books, there's a program where they mail you one book a month.
Yes.
And so, it's a very valuable tool.
From the age of zero to five. Another really important thing that we did this year is we do Books for Babies Kit for each child born in Siskiyou County. And that has books, what to do if your child gets sick. It has resources. It's full of information and good stuff for parents, some age-appropriate developmental milestones, things like that in it, things about the activities and events that are going on in the community. And we just got that started at Mercy. They probably haven't given their first one out yet, but it's coming to Mercy, which we've had in North County for probably five years. So, I was really excited that we got to put that in at Mercy Medical Center so that when children are born, they're getting this packet of information. Because like you said, a lot of people don't know that a lot of these resources exist in our community unless they've been able to access them or needing them before. So, we love that we can give one to each newborn child, and then immediately they can sign up for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and some of those resources. So, thank you for having me today. I will give you this.
I still need to talk to you later, too. Okay. Onto item number B. Rachel Jerup and Senior Planner, County of Siskiyou, will present their permit-ready single-family dwelling plans. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor.
You don't look like Rachel, but I...
Rachel is here.
Okay.
Yeah, routine community development director for the county of Siskiyou. Hoping that this meeting will be a bit more positive than the last. Oh, gosh. So, as we live and breathe, we've taken upon ourselves to acquire a grant, two years, and this has been in the making. And Senior Planner Rachel Jerup has been pushing, doing the heavy lifting for this. So, happy to present to you a set of home designs that are designed to be permit-ready, pre-approved by engineers that folks can come and choose a... Okay, sorry. I'll just say you all are far advanced over our board in Waireeka, so good job. At any rate, through the REAP grant, we were able to go out and contract and have some plans designed by architect and engineering to be basically pre-approved for folks to come in, pick up at the counter, choose, you know? So, the plan check is already done. They don't have to go out and acquire an engineer to design the plans and go through that whole process, right? So, it's basically a savings of, you know, $10,000 to $20,000 for folks, and it's more expedient. That said, this grant is regional, right? It's not just specific to the county. It's also available to each of the cities within the counties. So, we can provide these to you to utilize as you wish. Just generally speaking, they range from just under 400 square feet up to a dwelling unit of 1,650 square feet. They're all designed with a 60-pound snow load, which should be satisfactory for the Weed area. The snow load? 60-pound flat roof, snow load design. Yeah. So, they're pretty simple, pretty basic. Rachel did a lot of work with a consultant to try to make sure that they're easy to build so owner-builder can build them. They're all stacked roof designs, you know, built on dimensions of two feet, so materials are, you know, more effectively utilized. And before I turn this over to Rachel, just mention that two days ago, the governor signed AB 1332, which requires all local jurisdictions, including cities, to have in place an ADU program by the year of January 25, January 1. So, this could be a quick move into being compliant with the state regulations. So, I'm going to turn this over to... Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, and these can be utilized as a first dwelling, primary dwelling, but also as a secondary dwelling, with the exception of the larger unit, which is... There's a 1,200-square-foot max for an ADU. So, anything below that could qualify for a second dwelling on... So, this is all driven to create more housing throughout the state, basically. So... Okay, Vanna, it's all you.
Thank you, Rick. He's gotten quite an education on ADUs in the past year or so as we've worked on this project. But what I would like to do is go over these plans to just show you guys what we do have available for everybody in our county, regardless if they're in a city or in the county's jurisdiction. There are seven different plans, and the first one that we have up on the screen is our efficiency dwelling. And you'll notice that there are three different styles. That is because all of these units, regardless of which one people end up liking, they're all available in either the Craftsman, a farmhouse, or a modern style. And all of them have... We tried to make sure they had a lot of outdoor space. So, even though this is not even a 400-square-foot house, all three of the styles have a six-foot-deep front porch. And that is standard across all of these plans. It's a minimum of a six-foot-deep front porch. One of them actually has a 12-foot-deep front porch, and I will be happy to show you that. So, as I mentioned, this is the efficiency dwelling. It's basically the smallest house that you can build and still meet California building code requirements. It is a studio, and it has a full kitchen. It has a full bathroom, and it has a space for a stacked washer dryer. As I mentioned, it has that nice front porch, and it's available in three styles. All of the plans that we are offering can also be mirrored. So, if you want to flip it around a little bit, that's perfectly fine to do as well. Any questions on this one? All right, next page. All right. Got it? Maybe? It should be a studio. I think you just had it. So, that's the efficiency. The next one is going to be a studio. There you go. So, this one is a studio. One of the things that we wanted to also offer with these plans is we wanted to make them so that if we did have somebody who was in a wheelchair or had a little bit of trouble getting around, we wanted to give them a little bit of extra space and make these a little bit more accessible. So, all of the units, except for the next one, which is a two-story, can be used for ADA access. All of the doorways in all of these plans are three feet wide. And you'll notice that the bathroom is a little bit bigger than your standard bathroom. It's a little bit wider, so that way if somebody is in a wheelchair, they have a little bit of turnaround space. This is still a studio, but it's a 624-square-foot studio. It has an optional one-car garage. So, if somebody wanted to have a studio with a little bit of... a little bit of extra space to park their car and have it be covered, then they can choose to build it either with the garage or without. It would be, uh, totally up to them. It's an option on our plans. Again, this has a full kitchen. Uh, it still has space for a washer dryer, but this time, since we're trying to make it a little bit, uh, easier for people who have difficulty, we have them side-by-side, and there's a little closet in the hallway. Uh, next. This one is our only two-story unit. It's a two-car garage, and it has a six-hundred-and-twenty-four-square-foot studio above. It's, um, pretty similar to the previous one, except for that the washer dryer unit is again stacked since it's on the second floor. And, uh, it can be designed, or it can be used so that, uh, if somebody already had a house on the property, that they could use the garage and then they could rent out the upstairs as a separate unit. We have a separate door to go into the garage, so that could be kept locked if it's not being used by the property owner. Um, this one has a six-foot-deep front porch, uh, at the doorway, and then it has an upstairs deck that is also six-foot deep. And again, this can be mirrored, and it's available in these three styles that you see here. Next slide. This is the one-bedroom, uh, one-bath, and it has a cute little kitchen with a, an island in it. Again, it has a side-by-side washer dryer, and it has a garage, a one-car garage. This garage is actually not optional, and that is because it has the water heater in it. Uh, if somebody wanted to get rid of that water heater, uh, or relocate it, I should say, they would have to work with the designer, uh, to find, uh, a different location for it and to come up with custom plans for that, and it would just be, uh, at the applicant's expense for whatever changes are necessary. Uh, it has a little bath, uh, a little, uh, bedroom with a, uh, closet in it, and then it has that same larger bathroom with, uh, that extra space so that, uh, somebody can turn around with the, uh, a wheelchair. Um, one of the things that I didn't mention is that most of these bathrooms, if you take a look at the plans, uh, you'll see that it has a little space for a linen closet. And so since we are making them a little bit wider, it gave us that little extra space that we can tuck in a closet for a little extra storage for people. Uh, again, as I mentioned, it has an island in the kitchen, and then it has a separate living area, uh, for the living room. It does not have a dining room since it is still just a studio. Next slide? Or, sorry, it's a one-bedroom, but it's still the same square footage as the other studios that we saw, it's six-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet. This is the two-bedroom, one-bath, uh, similar to the previous ones, has a little linen closet in the bathroom with a little turnaround space, closet in the hallway, side-by-side washer dryer. It has an optional one-car garage, and it has those two bedrooms that, uh, each have their own little closet. Uh, as I mentioned, it, uh, they all have, uh, front porches, so you have a nice front porch on this one as well. Thank you. So this one is the largest of the units that we have available that can be used as an accessory dwelling unit, and it is a three-bedroom, two-bath. Um, the garage is not optional, and that's because we were trying to get a little extra square footage into the house, and so we relocated the washer dryer and water heater into the garage. Uh, any space like the garage does not count towards that twelve-hundred-square-foot limit, uh, so we were able to convert the space that used to have that washer dryer into a hallway closet. Um, as I mentioned before, there is a unit that has a twelve-foot-deep front porch. This is that unit. If you measure from the doorway to the edge of the porch, that's twelve feet. If you measure from where the bed is in the master, uh, to the edge of the porch, that's six foot. So depending on where you are, it has different, uh, porch depths. Uh, also, since we did move the washer dryer into the garage, we, uh, ended up designing it so it has a covered back patio as well, so that way you're not, uh, fully exposed to the elements if you have to go in and out of the garage, either to access your vehicle or to do some laundry. Um, it has a kitchen, dining area in the kitchen, and then a little living room area. This is a smaller living room area than what maybe some units, uh, of the same square footage could have, but again, the reason before that is, for that is because we made that bathroom a little bit bigger. And if you take a close look at that bathroom, you'll notice that the shower and the toilet are actually in a separate room from a double vanity sink area. And that's so that if we have situations, as many of us do, where we have extended family or friends that are living with us, or if you have a lot of kids like I do, who constantly are arguing about who's in the bathroom and whose turn it is, you can have somebody taking a shower while another kid is trying to brush their teeth and get ready in the morning. Um, the bedrooms, the two, uh, two extra bedrooms are, uh, a decent size, and they both have six-foot-wide closets. In the, uh, master bedroom, it has an en suite bathroom, again with a double vanity, and then it has a little closet area to give a little, uh, separation of space between the bathroom and the bedroom. So if somebody, for example, works night shifts and they're trying to get ready, um, and the other person's trying to sleep, then you have that little bit of separation of space with the double doors so that somebody can be getting ready, um, at the same time. Um, the other thing that both of our three-bedroom plans has, that none of the other plans have, is that we have a, an alternate garage door location. So right now, it's designed so that the garage door is on the left side, if you take a look at the plans, but if you notice on the bottom of those plans, there's a little bit of text that says alternate door location. And we designed this for people who have smaller lots that are a little bit more narrow, so that way they can rotate how that garage is accessed by the vehicles, so that way they can put this on a smaller lot or a narrower lot. Uh, and if they did do that, they could choose to have that, uh, back door into the kitchen actually be the front door, or they can continue to use what we have designed as the front door with that porch. It would be up to the property owner and, uh, person who's living there which one they would wanna do. Uh, any questions about this before I go on to the last one? All right, next one? Thank you. All right, this is our biggest unit. It's the only one that cannot be used as an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, it's six-hundred-and-fifty square feet. It's still a three-bedroom, but we managed to add in a, an extra half-bath, uh, in addition to a, an actual laundry room for, uh, this unit. It has an oversized garage. Those, uh, vehicles that are shown in the garage are full-size SUVs and pickup trucks, so you can see that there's still plenty of room around that, uh, the, those vehicles for it. And if you notice, uh, there's actually a little rectangle drawn on the back of the garage, and that is to depict a two-foot, either storage unit or a two-foot workbench. So if somebody did wanna have, uh, a tool bench or some extra storage in their garage, there, you can see that there is still room for that. As I mentioned before on the previous plan, there is an alternate location for the, uh, garage door. Um, on this particular plan set, it actually shows both of those garage door locations, so you can kinda get a little bit of a visual of what it would look like. Um, because there is that alternate garage door location pretty close to the front door, um, this is actually, even though it's our largest unit, it's one of the smallest front porches as designed. So if somebody was going to use this as a, uh, more of a courtyard front entryway, they would have a smaller front porch. If somebody wanted to utilize the, uh, garage door as, on the right-hand side of the garage, then they have the, uh, option of, uh, having that, uh, front porch expanded a little bit to give a little bit more outdoor space. Going into the home itself, when you first walk in, there's a coat closet, which is right by the front door, which none of the other units have. There is a separate dining area, which none of the other units have, and it's the only other one beyond that, uh, one-bedroom unit that has a kitchen island. That kitchen island is, uh, another EDAT island. It's, uh, four-foot by eight-foot, to give you an idea of the dimensions on it. And then there's a sliding glass door, uh, leading out to the backyard on this particular unit. Going into the master bedroom on the bottom of the floor plan, you can see that there's a walk-in closet. It has a walk-in, uh, it has a bathroom with, has, uh, double vanities again. It has two little closets, one inside the bathroom and one just outside of the closet. And then similar to the previous unit, it has a separate room for the shower and the toilet so that multiple people can be using it in comfort. Going, uh, also, one more thing about the suite, the master suite, it has a sliding glass door leading out to the back. Uh, the back porch area is, uh, mainly centered around, uh, the bedroom walls. So for this particular, uh, master bedroom, there's about a four-foot-deep, uh, overhang with, uh, a two-foot eve, so it's really realistically from edge of the eve to the wall, it's about a six-foot-deep covered area. Um, going on to the top of the plans, you see that there's two smaller bedrooms with closet. You have a hallway bathroom, that's your standard hallway closet or hallway bathroom that many of us have. It has a pantry area and, uh, an additional closet right next to it, and then turning the corner, that is where the, uh, washer dryer and extra half-bath are. So all of these plans, as Rick mentioned, they're available to anybody in the county, regardless if you're in the city or in the county. Um, since we are, uh, we are doing a plan check on these to make sure they meet California Building Code, we will be working with the individual cities to determine if they want to do their own plan check, or if they would accept the county's review of the plans or not. So, um, this is a pretty novel project for us. It's not one that we've ever done before, and one of the things that makes it special is that since it was a regional grant, we are offering it beyond just our jurisdiction. So only one other area in the state has actually offered that, and it was in San Mateo County, and it was not an actual, uh, local government agency. It was a, um, it was a group that, uh, was, got a grant from Air Pollution Control down in the Bay Area to offer it, um, to everybody in the county, and it was, uh, separate. And so what they did is they contacted all of the jurisdictions, and they asked them, uh, for what their requirements were for each of those, uh, pop, or each of those plans that they have available. And that's probably something that we're gonna be doing on our webpage. We're gonna contact each of the cities and say, what is it that you need for these plans? And to give you an example, for the county, if it was somebody in the county building these, we would require, uh, a site plan showing exactly where they're wanting to put this unit, what the setbacks are, and then we would also require environmental health clearance, or in this case, it would need to be the city clearance if it was the City of Weed. So depending on how you guys end up wanting to use these, it can be as, uh, i- as simple as that, or if you guys have more design standards that are, uh, maybe these plans need to be a little bit modified, that would be something that we would be working with you guys on to utilize these plans in, in your city. So anybody have any questions before I'm done? No? All right, thank you so much. I know you've heard this one before, so, thank you for sitting through it again.
No, I would actually have some questions.
You do?
You did, you did mention that modifications could be made, 'cause one of the conversations that I have had with a number of folks is, the county is using two thousand and eight standards and we're using two thousand and nineteen standards. So what you inferred was that possibly we could work with, with, uh, modifying these plans to kind of meet those different guidelines?
Uh, Mayor, just for clarification, um, on the, so these are, you know, regardless of fire, uh, it could be anywhere, okay?
Right.
Uh, the county's set back to the two thousand and eight standards specifically for Slater Fire or, you know, Chastina in this case, or the Millfire. Um, but your standards in the city are all yours, you know, however you guys wanna move forward with that.
Right.
Folks that would utilize these in, uh, in the fire burn areas, they would still be current code, however, they would not be required, required to do sprinkler systems or the photovoltaic, you know, the solar aspect of it. That would be waived.
From a county standpoint?
From the county standpoint.
But not from the city's, I, so far, not, we haven't done that from the city standpoint.
Yeah, exactly.
So my question would be, still, would the county be willing to figure out, 'cause we can't be the only city requiring those particular standards, although we're the only city that had the fire.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But, uh, can they be modified? Because the way I'm seeing this, I like this approach, I really do. But our standards are different, so if, if somebody says, oh, I like this plan, they're gonna have to bring them to an engineer, and you know engineers are fairly fussy about what, what they do with other people's work.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking, you kind of intimated that, that possibly, uh, there might be work that the county could do, because if you're doing this now, you'd, I mean, if you're looking to the future, we may not be the only city that burns based upon my experience as a good old insurance agent, but anyway.
Right. And, and again, doesn't have to be fire-related at all. It's at the point when we get into work with, with, uh, John and, and your plans designer reviewer, if there anything that stands out, that's a little off, that needs to be tweaked a little bit, we can work with our design professional to try to adjust that. But ultimately, you know, we're trying to get a, basically, cookie cutter, set of plans, very simple, uh, folks can use them to go to work, you know, uh, without too much complications. And, and, you know, uh, we don't wanna get too crazy, you can actually mirror them, but as far as changes that are structural or whatever, you know, we're gonna avoid that. Um, if folks wanna have a custom home designed, you know, go get the design professional, you know, do your, get their home, but, uh, this is trying to fulfill that niche, first-time buyers or builders, um, you know, quick and easy to rebuild, kinda thing.
How hard, how hard would it be, Rick, for the plan designer to incorporate the sprinkler and the solar for these plans?
Uh, so they would not.
They would not?
They would not, because it's site-specific, and even with, with the county, right? Um, if we're gonna have these plans outside of a fire area, we would require the sprinklers, would require the solar. And, uh, the applicant's gonna have to go and get that on their own and attach that to the set of plans. That makes sense, yeah. And also, if they need to do, you know, the soils, engineered soils, that'll have to come attached also. So this is just really the heart of the, the plans, you know?
To clarify what is included in this, you have the floor plans, you have a roof plan for building it on-site if you don't wanna use trusses. If you wanna use trusses, then you would need to contract with a truss manufacturer. It will, it will include mechanical stuff like, uh, air conditioning. It has those, uh, air conditioning and heating plans already made. It has plumbing plans, it has electrical. As Rick mentioned, uh, it's intended to be used on property that's flat, has non-expansive soils, so no clay soils. If you do have either of those things, if you have a sloped lot, or if you have expansive soils, then you would need to get, uh, a soil survey done and get some, uh, possibly some additional engineering on the foundation. Um, speaking of foundation, the foundation could either be slab or a raised foundation. If you have the slab, that is the one that is designed for, um, ADA access. If you want ADA access on a raised foundation, that would be additional engineering. If you wanted to have changes made to these plans, you would need to speak, uh, speak to the designer and work with them on making those changes, since they are their plans. We're paying for them to use them as-is, but any changes would need to be paid for by whoever is requesting the change, not the county and not the cities.
It would be need, if I, say, if I decided I wanted to do a plan, and I wanted to put them on a slope, and I wanted to do two thousand and nineteen standards, so that would be my expense, so, and I, and I would have to get approval from the folks that did this original design?
If you're modifying the plan, you need to work with them on that. Uh, if you want to come up with something that is not, i- it's not anywhere in line, you would have to work with somebody totally different, or have the designer come up with their own set of plans. These are designed for the twenty twenty-two Building Code, so that is what they're designed for. The major change that happened, um, over the past ten, fifteen years with Building Code is that it added, added the fire sprinkler requirement and it added the solar requirement. There weren't really many other changes. Um, you know, there are a few. Um, well, there's changes with like the electrical as far as the, um, Title twenty-four requirements, which is also included in these, this plan set. We have a Title twenty-four is the energy consumption requirements that the state enacts. But, so there are specific things that are included, but if you go beyond what the standard lot is that these are designed for, um, or if you need to have that fire sprinkler or solar on your property, then you would need to go ahead and pay for that in, uh, beyond what we're offering with these plans. It's, we're offering a basic set that is intended for specific uses that, if you go beyond that, it's, uh, the property owner's expense, or builder's expense, whoever's doing it.
Whoever's doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, um, just one last thing. If anybody has any question, either here in this room or online, you can email me. My email address is R J E R E, B as in Boy, at C O dot Siskiess dot C A dot U S. Again, that's R Jerib, J E R I B, at C O dot Siskiess dot C A dot U S. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Just one thing I wanna reiterate is, this is a soft rollout. All the engineering's not completely done yet, right? So, just, uh, they're not ready to snap up.
Well, quick.
Just yet.
Get in that, get, go in for the, uh, the solar. No, just kidding. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you all. Yes? Yeah, they do, yep.
At least part of it.
Uh, Chief's question was, is the EV charging part of it? Yes.
I got it. Okay. With that, on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? And if not, we can make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the, uh...
Consent.
Consent to the agenda, excuse me.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All public comment.
What's that? Any public comment? We do have public today, I forget. Seeing no public comment, oh, I get a mo, do I get an approval, a notion, did I get something?
You got a motion and a second.
Okay, how many in favor then, for crying out loud?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Don't throw me out, that curve ball just, I was on, I was on a roll, Tim, just getting this through here. Uh, on to item number nine, council business, A, finance. By motion, council, consider introduction and reading of type, by title only, of ordinance 471, 2023, updating the Weed Municipal Code 3.04 for purchasing. Do we want to report? Quickly?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, David Ruderman, your city attorney, for the record. Um, before you this evening is the first reading of an ordinance that would amend the city's purchasing policy, which governs, uh, purchases for goods, equipments, and supplies, uh, and services. It does not govern public works purchases, which is governed by statute. Um, so this generally updates our current code so that it can align with the, uh, policies, the financial policies that we, that you just adopted on consent, um, which is required for, uh, when we get federal grants. Um, it does, uh, adjust the thresholds for, uh, the city manager's purchasing authority, as long as it's budgeted by this council. Um, it provides for exemptions for piggyback purchasing, um, as well as, uh, there is a small local preference for local vendors. And it also includes some language that governs our disposition of surplus city property. We currently don't have, uh, any, any ordinance that governs that. So cleans up all those things, aligns it with our policies. Um, this is the first reading, it will come back again if it is adopted this evening for a second reading and adoption at the next, uh, council meeting. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's above my pay grade. Okay, just kidding.
I, I just, uh, discovered there's just one little typo on it, that we need to address that or not?
Um, yes, we should address.
On, on section?
Page three.
Yeah, page three, section two, uh, B, it says, um, expected cost more than 10,000, and it's got 3,000 in parentheses, so.
You have a question?
No.
He wants Paul.
Yeah, so that should be changed, engage in informal. So it should be 3,000 is the correct.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
Instead of 10, it should say 3.
Oh, okay.
It says 3 in one part and 10 in the other part.
It is the 3.
Yes, because... Yes, because this relates to the matrix. So under the policy, items that cost less than 3,000 do not require bidding. Um, items, wow, did I bore them that much?
You go on and on so much.
That's how you lost control.
From 3,000 to 25,000 is informal bidding, and so that's what it was, yeah.
We got it.
So I guess I would ask for the motion to include as amended, uh...
As amended? Okay.
Now we need people.
We need people back and then we will, as amended.
You're still in quorum, so.
That's true.
Okay, okay. Uh, you want to make a motion then?
Well, we can have public comment and, and any questions.
No, I want to say something.
Okay.
Do I have to wait for them? Do you, do you want to say anything?
No.
Um, so, and this is just for the public, because we already discussed this, this is cleaning up something we've already had.
Yeah.
That's just needs to be, go from the 1961 standards to the 20, is it 23?
2023.
Standards. So it's not new, it's cleaning up.
Correct.
And updating.
And it matches the new policies.
With the caveat that we don't have, we didn't have anything to govern disposition of surplus property.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
There you go.
If we accept this, uh, first reading as amended.
Do we have to say, I move to introduce?
No, I think, uh, Councilmember Parham's motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie's by three. Oh, Mark, what count, Mark is four.
I didn't say anything, because I didn't know, I missed something.
You didn't miss anything important, no.
I'm for it.
For it. Bob's for it?
Yes.
Five, five is zero. We voted for it, okay. Informally.
Can you give me your...
I don't, I can't sit like that. Because I can't stand up. Yeah, I can, not now.
You need to do it, no, like, Kim needs to have. Give me stuff.
I'm looking at my watch.
I don't mean, I just can't sit in, I sit at home like this. Jan goes, can you get comfortable? I said, I am.
You've been sitting on a ball too long.
I've been sitting on a ball for, I sit at the edge of my chair, Jen says, you ruined the chair. This is okay. All right, item B, uh, discussion only. At the request of the mayor, the council will discuss options for a condemnation ordinance and give direction to staff. Uh, I think instead of a condemnation order, what I think we were looking for was some basic 101 on condemnation procedures. The steps involved to get us there, such as investigative warrants, uh, abatements, and, uh, condemnation, as those proceedings move forward, so that the council is more aware of the steps involved, as the coun, and if the council can be aware of, when we get questions from the general public, that we can be educated enough to give them a, an adequate response without jeopardizing, uh, possibly, uh, an issue that might come before us. Um, it would also help us define the roles of everybody involved, from, uh, law enforcement to legal, to the administrator's position, and to the council's position. Um, I, I think we just need that, we have, we need some sort of order and understanding so that we can proceed with, uh, what I would interpret it as bad behavior in our city and disrespect for our city. So, um, with that, I guess I would ask for direction from maybe Da, David to, um, from legal counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Condemnation is a pretty broad term. Um, I think what the, what you're interested in is code enforcement options that the city has. And the city has numerous tools in its tool belt already. Um, it has administrative procedures for citations, for violations of the municipal code. It has procedures for abatement, uh, administrative abatement, which would require correction of violations. And if those corrections are not made by the property owner or responsible party, um, there is the possibility that the city can, can make those corrections and then assess or lien the property for the costs of that abatement, so that's administrative enforcement. Um, there's always the option of a, of a civil action that obviously would in, would involve, um, the council, you know, authorizing a lawsuit against a particular, uh, property owner. Um, and obviously, in the context of a civil case, you know, the courts have quite a bit of authority to impose remedies to, um, require, you know, up to destruction of the property if it merits it. Also, that's where receiverships come in, which is where, uh, the court appoints somebody to essentially administer the property, um, and sell it, and then use the proceeds to pay off, uh, whatever debts are, are attached to that property. Um, and then there's criminal enforcement. I mean, many of our, uh, municipal code, uh, provisions do, uh, do make certain violations misdemeanors. Those are obviously, uh, the city has very little control over those because, um, they would be prosecuted by the district attorney. And misdemeanors normally, in my experience, don't get, uh, there's just simply not the resources in the district attorney's office to actually prosecute, uh, city officials. So, and for the most part, you see a lot of administrative enforcement, and when it comes to that, um, you know, it's really, it's really the, the city, the city manager and his designees that have the, it's essentially a prosecutorial discretion, um, to cite people for violations, and that's not a council function. Um, council's role is obviously to set policy. And in some cases, the council may be called upon to adjudicate certain administrative violations. At this point, after, after our discussion earlier, uh, Mr. Mayor, I did review again some of our code positions, and for the most part, we actually have hearing officers that would preside over that. It wouldn't necessarily be, um, the council. But there is obviously some sensitivity between, you know, who's making the, the, who has the prosecutorial discretion to cite people? And it's really not an elected person's function, it's not an elected body's function. It's a, it's a staff function. So I'd be happy to, you know, lay out some of these, these roles, responsibilities, have as a city, um, and present that to you at a future agenda, if that's something that... The other, the other wor, the other meaning that the term condemnation has, which is one that I presume is not what you intended, is actually taking private property for a public purpose, um, and paying the property owner for the, um, fair market value of that property. So that's, that's obviously something different than remedying a code violation. That's, you know, for the most part, if you charge public work or something, that...
Well, I think the council's po, point, at least from my standpoint and me hearing, is that, did you want some, say something? Okay. Is that, uh, a lot, a lot of this dilapidation in our city has been ongoing for 20 years. There is a lot of frustration from the council's standpoint and also from our citizens' standpoint. And our citizens are looking to elected officials to rein that in a bit. So what I'm after is, how do I make a judgment call if we're doing this efficiently and using the tools that we have to get that job done? So as part of this direction, I would also like us to come up with some sort of reporting method so that if people change positions, or if people, like the council comes and goes, we ha, have something to go, here's where we are. Here's where we left it, here's where we need to go, we need to get re, reports in so that we can say, see that we're making progress. Because right now, the last time we discussed some of these issues regarding the problems with downtown has been three months ago? I'm guessing, but, uh, it's been at least three months ago, uh, of trying to track down different issues. So, I don't know where investigative warrants play part in that, but based upon your description, they, we have to be able to see these properties in order for our, for the, for everybody to play their part here. Right? I mean, that, that's kind of a necessary item. So, uh, again, one, I want some education for our council. Um, two, I want to know all the tools we have and how we report those. And, and so, you know, it just makes sense for me, and I don't know about the other council members, but, uh, I, I think I'm speaking for the body, to tell you the truth, but they're, they each have, might have a different opinion as to the importance of any particular issue, but, um, so that's kind of what I'm after. I don't, I, I ju, I just feel, um, without some form of movement, we can't, our, our city is being held hostage a bit to the bad players. And I think everybody can, can understand that frustration, even at staff level. I mean, it's, it's, just the irony of this, that you can just, without going too far and be, being too prejudicial on anything, but...
So I would echo that statement as far as further education for the council and staff and roles and responsibilities, as well as the reporting process that we can review as a legislative body, um, actions that, you know, are pending or should be considered. Um, but I'd also like to ask the staff at all levels to take a more proactive approach at enforcing our ordinances that we have, um, because there is a risk of exposure to the city, as well as our citizens or constituents, if we have properties that are dilapidated, that have, uh, criminal activity, homeless activity, um, fire potential. I mean, we've survived serious fire issues in this community in the last 15 years. Um, it is our responsibility as the city to take a proactive approach to mitigating those issues before they become a problem. And so, um, whatever we can do through education, reporting, and active, you know, activity, um, I would like to see that happen and, and with full support from the council, um, to the staff to get that done. I understand we have a lot with rebuilding, reconstruction right now, there's, as we heard earlier, a lot of tensions, um, over the, the rebuilding of our, of our neighborhoods, um, and our infrastructure needs. But the concern, and it's growing not just amongst the council and staff, but our, our citizenry, is that we could have another potential issue because of those, um, bad actors, um, so to say. And that's not the point of finger at, you know, commercial versus residential, I think there are areas that need improvement across the board, um, and that's something that we need to look at. The city staff has made an extraordinary effort, um, to make improvements for the city, um, both in, in, you know, recovery and in being proactive for the future. But we need to make sure that our citizens and those property owners that have property within our city are doing their part, um, as well, to make sure that, you know, we have a safe, clean, and secure city for everybody that, that lives and does business here.
I, I also think that some of this can be, besides commercial, besides commercial, we also have some bad players. Uh, I know there's one particular person that had a fire in the, and although th, they have made attempts, I'm not sure how serious those attempts are, I think they're attempts enough to appease our building inspector for a short while, and then our building inspector has to revisit that all the time. I, that, that's kind of irritating, this is the fact that they're not being responsible either. Uh, I, I don't get it, what it is, but, uh, there, there's, it, it shows in our attitude sometimes, I think, with our citizenry and, and just how we approach our city. So I want to make it a more positive experience, and I think we have to be a little bit more forceful, unfortunately, to get it, get us there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think one of the issues is that, especially for the public, is these, this
issue gets to be so critical as far that we, we usually have to discuss in close, close session, because, because of the sensitivity of, of, of our actions, and I, that's, I think that's frustrating. I, I think, I think it's really important to know where we are. That's, that's what the public wants to know, what, what are we doing? Where are we? And, and, and that's, that's a, uh, it seems very fluid in, in, as, as far as a, being a city council person, uh, it, it's, it's frustrating to, you know, we, we just don't know where we are. It's like, uh, we, we want to do something, and we know we're doing something, but where are we?
So maybe we want to add that to, maybe to, to add to that little request for staff is... is some guidelines on how far we, we go. In other words, how personal do we get and how unpersonal do we go?
How much can the public know?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because that's, I mean, yeah, it comes to the point where people ask, and you go, yeah, we're doing something, but we won't, we can't disclose what we're doing out of, out of, post-session.
Well, there's some of the, the things that we talked about had to do with, with ownership. And I think when it comes to ownership, I think then that becomes kind of sensitive.
There's less, there's, if it's a criminal issue, that obviously there is our investigatory functions that we have to preserve the confidentiality of. And, but for purely administrative procedures, that can be public to a certain extent. However, again, if the facts are also relevant to a potential criminal action, then again, you fall into this, this realm where you need to protect the confidentiality of what could be an investigation. And then, obviously, if there is civil litigation involved, then you're dealing with attorney-client privileged discussions. And in that case, those would be specific instances, you know, we could have a discussion about what is public and what is not public.
Okay.
Oftentimes, there are things that are not, you know, that are public, that people know about. It's the deliberations and the advice between myself and your body that would be confidential. But, you know, the fact of this violation happening and the fact of this complaint being filed, those things would be public. But, yeah, we can add that if that's the will of the council.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I'm done with that discussion item, I guess. Is there any other, anybody want to question about it or anything? Okay, sorry. So, sorry to belabor all of that, but I, I just think it's important.
Good point.
Um, on to staff reports. Actually, do you want, I think he's going to do a presentation during staff report. So Brian, you're up and running on staff report from the fire...
All right. The first paper you'll see with the blue top is just a breakdown of the incidents we ran from September 1st through October 12th, just today. Seventy-two total incidents. Two of those were vehicle fires, and then the 600 series you see there is actually just public assists. We, as a fire department, now have six sleeper positions filled. We still have one opening left. Two of those are Cal Fire employees, and four of them are going to be going into the Fire Academy starting October 30th. So that's pretty good. We're starting to fill up and getting more applications for that. So that's good. We've now had the FEMA recruitment and retention lieutenant employed for about four months, so since June 20th of this year. His name's Usmaro Sanchez. He's brought on three new volunteers and four sleeper firefighters. He's continuing to take various training classes that he'll be able to use to train the new firefighters coming on. And part of this grant also includes outfitting the new firefighters with turnouts, which we've been getting them fitted for those as well. This, just kind of started this week. Cal Fire issued a statement regarding they were going to be lifting the burn permit suspension on October 14th at 6:00 a.m., which is Saturday. So in keeping with that, we will be lifting ours as well, and we'll be doing an official announcement soon before that date.
What kind of burning is allowed in the city?
What kind of burning?
Uh-huh.
Residential, which would be four by four by four pile of leaves and branches and stuff like that. Yeah. And then some of the bigger properties can get a commercial permit, which would be for anything bigger than a four by four pile, or anything for more than one four by four pile. We can do those too. And then just with that, we still, anyone who would want to burn in the city would still need a burn permit. And the burn permits we issued are good for one year from the time of purchase. And then at the bottom of that burn permit, there's a county air pollution control phone number that you have to call. So even with you have the burn permit, you still have to call that number to make sure it's still a burn day.
And it's only valid when burning is allowed?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah. And there's the additional attachment there. I put a cover letter on it. It's just a document of the reimbursements that we've received for fiscal year 2023. These come from incidents for our response to larger wildland fires, our agreements with College of the SISCUs to use our fire engines and personnel, and our agreement with Cal Fire and Cal OES to respond to larger fires, and also our agreement with Roseburg to provide confined space standby services whenever they work in confined spaces. Each of these agreement has similarities and slight differences. And if anybody has any questions about those, I'd be happy to discuss those with you.
I, I think the, the final page on there, which you might want to discuss, Brian, is the reimbursements.
Okay.
That was a, a question that got brought up as far as, because your budget, every year since I've been here, you guys exceed overtime.
Yes.
And there's a reason. And...
Yeah. So the last page of that is just a pie chart that utilizes the data on the second to last page, where it says total reimbursements for fiscal year 23, 24. And you'll see the total and then the breakdown between administration fees, equipment reimbursement, personnel, and workers' comp. And the total personnel there, that is what we would utilize to pay for the additional costs of salaries and overtime for the response to those incidents, whether they're fires, or to the college, or for confined space standby at Roseburg. And then the equipment reimbursement, that is what we get for an hourly rate when we respond to fires, depending on what engine we take there, or what truck or whatever we're using. There's an hourly rate that is reimbursed to pay for maintenance and also equipment replacement. And that's within those agreements with OES and Cal Fire, and also Roseburg gives us a reimbursement cost for the equipment we use on standby as well.
And then we get administration fees as well?
Yes. Yeah. And on there, you see administration fee and workers' comp, other pieces of the pie there that go to pay for, obviously, workers' comp, and then admin fees is anything related to, you know, anything here at the city hall required to deal with any of these incidents and the paperwork and all that.
So out of this whole pie chart, this is all Cal OES that is paying this bill?
No.
No. The rest of the pages, from page one, it kind of lines out what each amount is for. You see the COS Fire Academy, Engine 1210. That is an engine that we bring there for every academy, for their structure portion of the academy. And that's so that the cadets have an engine to use for different parts of their training.
And Brian, are you, are we the only city that brings an engine for that?
Yes and no. We're the only city with an agreement with them to do it.
Okay.
Sometimes other cities or agencies bring an engine, but we're the only one that they could call upon to have it there for, you know, certain amounts with a operator.
Okay.
The next one is Engine 1214, which is our wildland engine. That's brought there for the wildland portion of the academy. White Fire and Martin Fire were smaller fires that happened around here. They're lightning fires. You see in July.
And that's not OES paying us back? Is it, is it that?
The White Fire and Martin Fire, those were Cal Fire incidents.
Oh.
The Happy Camp Fire, that will be a Cal OES reimbursement.
That's not, do we get any reimbursements from the feds?
So it was a federal incident, but we were ordered through Cal OES.
Okay, got it. All right.
And then the confined space standby, September 21st, 2023, that was through our agreement with Roseburg to provide the confined space personnel while they do their shutdowns.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I ask a bunch of questions?
You betcha.
Thank you. So, um, the total personnel, that 181, blah, 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 that's going to go to, well, all of this comes to the city.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So that gets added, added into what you normally get paid. Your overtime comes out of that.
Correct.
And that's, and the firefighters that went on the fire, they get some pay?
Yes.
Okay. So that's kind of all spent?
It's supposed to be as close to awash as we can make it.
Right. Okay.
And that's our intention with, through the agreement that is the California Fire Assistance Agreement.
Right. So then that 148, that also goes into that because for the workers' comp and all that lovely stuff?
Yes. The, the workers' comp, part of our agreement with Roseburg is to have that separate. You'll see on the confined space standby, there's a 20% admin fee and a 15% workers' comp fee. That is, the 15% workers' comp fee is in addition to the hourly pay that is in our agreement with them. With the personnel costs that come through Cal OES and Cal Fire,
Mm-hmm.
that includes a fee for workers' comp and unemployment insurance.
Oh, okay. That 181.
In that hourly rate.
That's added in. Okay.
Okay. And so now the 41 for the admin fee, that could go to you, it could go to Sandy, it could go to whoever.
Sorry. Per the agreement with CFAA,
Okay.
They don't...
California firefighters.
California Fire Assistance Agreement.
Okay.
They don't specify exactly where the administration fee has to go. It's a 10% flat rate, and it's designed for, like I said earlier, the making of all the paperwork required to receive the reimbursement and keeping all the paperwork and everything like that.
So that just gets melted into?
The, the general fund.
The general fund. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, because we got...
Because lots of people do it. Yeah.
Yeah. Because we've got lots of people involved in the administration of these, because you got...
So that 20% is, is a typical amount that is allowed for monies coming into any organizations such as?
10%.
Well, there's, it's 20%.
Yeah, and 10.
It's, it's 10% for the OES, and then 20% for our agreement with Roseburg.
Roseburg, yeah. They pay more.
Okay, Roseburg, okay. So 10%. It's kind of like when we, when we hired Great Northern to do a project for us.
Yeah.
To oversee it. Admin fee, a grant. Yes.
Okay. And then the total equipment reimbursement, that goes back into?
That, that, that money is to go back for repairing equipment or purchase of equipment.
Of new equipment?
Yep.
Yes.
And so we...
And that, that goes back to the general fund as well?
That amount and these differences in the personnel reimbursement and the differences you see on our salaries and overtime on the finance report. I was working with Jill this week and will be working on a budget amendment to bring these funds back in line so they're not over, on the overtime and salaries.
Okay.
Utilizing these...
Whatever you two are doing, that sounds good.
Utilizing these funds.
Okay. 103,938, that is in a separate category?
Correct.
So when something breaks, it can get fixed, and hopefully we don't break $103,000 worth of stuff. So we could have money in there to buy?
Affirmative.
A new engine.
Probably not that much. The cost of turnouts, medical supplies.
Well, turnouts we're getting grants for.
Things like that.
Yeah, but they're usually 50-50 grants too. So, I mean...
Yeah.
During our...
There's not going to be a large pool of cash available to buy, say, a half million dollar engine. That's all said and done.
Daryl, don't burst my bubble.
Given you facts. I ran a fire project this fifteen years, so I know a little bit about it.
Um, okay.
I have a question, if I could.
Go ahead.
On OES, on, what is a maximum they pay in a 24-hour period for reimbursement? So you guys have been on 24 hours, right? Do you get paid for 24 hours?
Yes. Our, our agreement that we have through the CFAA is referred to as a portal-to-portal agreement. And what that means is, from the time they call us to an incident, to the time we get back home to our station, we are in pay status. So that would be a 24 hours a day.
But on this one I have, it says they pay 16 hours maximum.
So that is for the equipment alone? On the equipment, so the, 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 where are you reading that at?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that amount you see there for the type 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6?
Yeah, I see that.
The 128, $128.27 is for a type 3 fire engine, which is what we take to wildland fires. Through the CFAA agreement, they reimburse us for 16 hours every day for the equipment and 24 hours a day for the personnel.
And that's everybody, every municipal, everyone that goes, gets called out, gets the same thing, or is that an agreement? Just with them, is this how it works through the state government?
Yeah. So the California Fire Assistance Agreement is what's used between all local governments and the federal government and the state government to respond to fires. So, yes, every local agency in the, in SISCU and throughout California utilizes the same agreement. And that 16 hours a day for equipment and 24 hours a day for personnel is the same for us, and it's the same for Mount Shasta and Montague and Lake Chastina, everybody.
Well, it's kind of vague because I'm, I'm just reading...
Hey, Mark, you're going to get in trouble because that kid's not going to tell you to talk into your microphone, but he really wants you to.
I'm sorry.
You're welcome, Sandy.
I talk loud enough. I think he...
I know. Well, I do too.
But it goes directly into his box there.
But anyway, so when I read it though, it doesn't, it just doesn't say for the vehicles. That's how I was reading it. It didn't say that until I went down in what you're saying, emergency apparatus rates. And then it shows up here too, like your overhead or strike teams, you get 34, 59 for straight time, 51, 89 for, you know, for like overtime. So none of this is in wages. None of that is in wages.
So there are some...
That's all I'm asked. I want to know.
Yeah. So there, there's some difference between what you're looking at and the CFAA that we sign.
Okay.
It includes what's called a salary survey. And the salary survey is, if the straight time that you're looking at there is if we didn't have full-time personnel with a set hourly wage bef, like, right now, full-time, we would, if we went on a fire, Cal OES would reimburse us at that rate, whatever, whatever's written on that page. We utilize the salary survey to calculate our salaries, include mine, the chief, captains, engineers, firefighters. We utilize that salary survey to show them our actual cost of salary to pay a firefighter, a captain, an assistant chief to go to that fire. And then the agreement with CFA is that if we submit that salary survey by May 5th of every year, they take it, they look over it, they review it and sign it and put it in our Cal, or sorry, our CFAA file. And then that is what they base our pay off of. So when we go there, they're taking our salary that we've calculated with them that includes overtime, sorry, not overtime, unemployment and workers' comp. And they take that rate, and that's what they pay us off of. So we send them our base rates with unemployment and workers' comp. And our agreement states that when we go there, they will start paying us the overtime rate of whatever we put on our salary survey. And that salary survey is also where it says we get a... And that salary survey is also where it says we get a ten percent admin fee on top of everything.
Could, could a, 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 a city or a, a company send somebody out without, and, without that agreement? Will they call somebody that hasn't done that agreement?
Everyone, e- every fire department is part of the CFAA.
Or they don't go.
But not every fire department has a salary survey.
Okay.
So if you don't submit a salary survey with our actual wages.
You get what you get.
You get what the standard rate is that you see on that form that you're looking at.
And then it's, is that, is that something that I can get access to, to see what, so I can see it in the breakdown of what you're talking about?
The.
Is that something as a council person I can look at, or is this out of citizen? A breakdown of that.
I would think so, it's, it's just one of our agree, we can send that agreement.
I would just like to see it, so I can see it in my mind and read it. And so I understand if I need to break it down or, or look at it further, ask more questions.
Yeah, the, the California Fire Assistance Agreement, uh, that can be found on the Cal OES website and I'll, I'll get it and then make sure you get it out to you.
Then if I can get, if that's where it's at. It's all gonna be under this then, really? Basically, Cal OES?
Yeah, under the administration and rebur, reimbursements tab, you'll be able to scroll down and find the.
Okay.
Uh, it's titled May first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, CFAA agreement.
And is it like a yearly?
It, it's usually every two years, this one is, um, about three, four years here.
Well, I'm getting educated.
Yeah.
And then the other thing I, I wanna know, I just, again, it's, it's confusing to me. Um, we have volunteers, right? They're getting paid, are they on the, the city payroll?
They are, they get.
They're not ten ninety-nine or, or what?
So they, they were, were actually going through the process right now of filling out.
Umbrella, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the auditor has, has informed us, we were not doing it correctly with ten ninety-nine, he said they have to be on the payroll.
Under that.
Yes, it has to be under the, yeah, that just happened in the last, what, like, six weeks?
Yeah, we, we're working on.
That way, it just hasn't been doing it, or is it a new law that came in? I might say anyone's wrong.
No, I, I, I think we've always paid them a, a stipend for every run. And then typically, didn't they want it to be paid out in like in December or something?
Yeah, it used to be.
Yeah, the.
Like your work, like the vacation or.
Yeah, they would get, but it's a small, it's not very much and.
Was it eight dollars a call?
Eight dollars a call.
Twelve dollars a call.
Probably should, but.
It's currently twelve.
And then the auditor said, basically, we have to take what that total would be and then put them on the payroll, so.
So how many do we, do we know offhand, how many we actually have on payroll?
Are you asking how many volunteers we have?
Yes.
We have two, three full-time paid right now.
Okay.
And then fifteen volunteers.
Why don't we have our own fire department?
Whoa.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, you have enough.
Cause you're talking fifty thousand dollars a person or better.
So when they talk about payroll, Mark, uh, basically California has a, um, a, a, a law now that if you ten ninety-nine somebody, um, and they don't have a business license and a workers' comp, you're responsible as the person who issues that for their workers' comp. Um, and so by bringing the volunteers under the umbrella of payroll is to say that their payroll gets processed through the city and all the deductions and workers' comp is made appropriately, uh, whenever that period is, whether it's annually, monthly, semi-weekly. Um, and so, you know, there are still volunteers, but when they go on a strike team, uh, cause this has worked with, with our department, we were all volunteers, we didn't have a pay schedule, so we didn't do a salary survey. When we go on a, on a, on a call, we got paid that rate. And then it was issued, you know, as, as a payroll with all the appropriate deductions to be legal with, um, franchise tax board and IRS, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not to say that our volunteers are staff that are, you know, getting salaries or hourly wages. They're just being paid out of payroll so that all the, um, taxes and withholdings are done correctly to whatever agency is requiring that.
This should have been going on for a while?
I'm not familiar with how long that's been, that's a.
Well, we, we've been doing it with the ten ninety-nine for quite a ti, uh, since I've been here. And then the auditor just came out a couple, Charlie just was at jail just a couple of months ago, said, whoa, whoa, you guys need to be, which we didn't know. That's why we have an auditor and he told us, and then he started going through the payroll instead, so.
So you have how many on payroll? I mean, I'm just saying, how many volunteer, no, how many volunteers? People at that station, he said sixteen?
At the station, we have.
How many people, if a fire breaks out tonight, how many people will show up, just say from the Wee Fire Department?
Tonight, we'll have three.
And so wh- when I asked you that and you said there were X amount, more than that, what, explain that for me.
So we have, like I said, we have three full-time, myself, Chief Duncan, and then the lieutenant, that's the FEMA. And then we have six sleeper firefighters.
Okay.
Two of them, um, have full-time jobs with Cal Fire. And one of them is currently in the EMT class.
Okay.
Um, and two of them are on shift tonight with myself. And then the rest of them are volunteers who all but one of them are employed with Cal Fire full-time.
Okay, thank you.
So those two kids that are on call tonight, if you, if there's no calls tonight, they get zero money. But if there's a call, they'll get twelve dollars.
Correct.
If there's two calls, they get twenty-four dollars.
Yep.
And only because I'm really good at math, if there's three calls, they'll get thirty-six dollars. And then, etc. I don't know.
We'll stop at three.
Um, but that, but they, for sitting there, they're getting nothing.
Correct.
They just need to wake up. And you said fifteen or sixteen are employed by Cal Fire?
Yes.
So they're just volunteers. Do they, they get the twelve dollars?
A, a volunteer responds to an incident is twelve dollars per call.
Do they usually write their name down for that twelve dollars?
We, we put them on the report for our reporting purposes, yes.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's quite a report. Okay, hold on, we gotta be out of here by midnight.
So, I knew that they're all Cal Fire, one of the thing is, oh, sorry. One of the things about it is a, is a volunteer has to have the exact same training as somebody that goes through the fire academy.
Right, and, and normally once they get trained and they're trained.
Oh, they go to work for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
You know, so yeah, I understand.
Purpose is twelve dollars an hour.
Kinda like what happened in, say, police department. They get paid, they get trained, and they take off to a bigger.
Well, no, they stay here.
Apparently in volunteers, we don't have to pay the, uh, to minimum wage either.
No.
But let's let Brian off the hook and let's move on to public works.
And how many of your, how many of your volunteers live here in town? Right, like, could respond? With half a dozen of them.
Yeah, yeah, if they're not working.
Right, yeah, if they're home. Cause there's some, and there's some volunteers that don't live here in town.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, are we done burning, pouring Brian's brain up here? Okay, on to public works.
He gets paid for it.
You did a pretty good job, thank you very much, Brian.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so right now we got about three different projects going on at all at the same time. Uh, right now we have the water and sewer project that's being done by Mike Peters. That's the water line going down Roseburg Parkway. Um, they are making some tie-ins early next week. Uh, so the water will be off in certain areas at some point next week. They are also, as long as everything goes according to plan, uh, they are gonna be paving North Davis, Roseburg Parkway on Thursday or Friday of next week. Um, another project we have going on is of course the Wakefield Waterline, Wakefield-Alameda. They started on Monday, they've already ran the water main up Alameda and they started on Wakefield late yesterday and they're already about halfway up through Wakefield. Once, um, they install the water main and as long as everything checks out as far as water sampling, um, they are gonna wait for the underground, uh, for power and, and AT&T to go through there. And then after that, they're gonna start running their connections to each slot. Um, as far as the underground part of it, for power and AT&T, they did start up on Church Street, on the very top of Church Street on Monday as well. And they're already down to Kennedy, they still got some work to do, you know, up on Church Street. But for the most part, the trench is already going towards Kennedy.
So you think a couple of weeks?
I have no idea on that one, um.
I'm trying to pin you down, man. I know, but I mean, based upon what's moving, it's not out of the question.
It's, both projects are moving at very fast rate. Um, both Tyler Evans with, that's doing the underground and Sunrise is doing the water line, they are moving at lightning speed.
I just wanna make sure Robert has power and water. And can flush his toilet.
Um, are they getting their streets repaved when all this is done? Are they gonna get some asphalt?
Well, you want ready? So with some of the, uh, money that's left over for the Wakefield and Alameda project, we are looking into possibly overlaying some of the roads. Uh, we gotta see where the numbers come in on that one.
And, and just, just for clarification, um, we're utilizing some grant funding that we were hoping to use for something else because we were waiting for OES. And then Paul Ruder had to finally tell them, cause they, it's been unbelievable. They, they finally got back and said, okay, give us some more details on the, uh.
I'm gonna have to be on a phone call tomorrow.
And Paul had to say, boys, we're already using grant money for that because we can't wait any longer, so. I mean, that's the level of frustration with OES is off the chart. And I'm not trying to throw everybody under the bus, but.
Sure, fine, they, they need to be underneath the bus.
We got, we, we got assigned, uh, somebody that, like I said, we were, wh- when I saw him out there and saw how young he was, I said, how many of these have you done? He goes, you guys are my first. And I'm like, great, so.
So glad to have the experience.
Yeah, so anyway.
We, that, that's the kind of, that's three hundred and forty thousand dollars right there that we, if, if OES had been on the stick and got us the money, we would be able to utilize that money for other stuff. Now, we are asking.
Oh, sorry, we are asking OES for funding on the streets, on the, the paving as well and some manholes and some other stuff. But i- is at a snail's pace and, uh, we're all extremely frustrated, so. Anyway, I don't wanna harp on them anymore, so.
I do. Tomorrow I'll harp on them. I still have April's, is it April? It's April, that's her name. Yes, and our police department.
I have nothing unless you guys have something from a question.
I do have a question.
True.
That, what was that money called that you got extra?
The cops.
Cops money?
Cops allocation.
Do you, is it a use it or lose it, or can you roll it over?
No, it just has to be, it can't be rolled over, but it has to be budgeted before we can receive it. So that's why it had to be added to our amended budget.
Okay.
Um, in the past, we've purchased vehicles, we've purchased encryption, um, to, to help fill that requirement. Um, we're just asking to have it in the capital outlay for, to be determined at a later date because we may need some stuff, um, I don't know if Sergeant Clonparent spoke, but we potentially may need a server.
Yeah, uh, but they can't take it back now.
No, no, it, it goes to every city actually.
Okay, you're not gonna.
Every city uses it for different things, we always use the initial one hundred to fund our community service officers.
Right.
So.
But that, uh, that extra that they get, that you, they can't come back and take it away from you? Because we put it in the budget.
As long as we use it correctly, I'm, I'm sure they would want it back if we don't use it correctly.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all.
David?
Um, I have no report this evening. Other than that, I did go to Cal Cities and was happy to see Mayor Bo Cham and Councilmember Hall there.
Yeah, and he had a lovely.
Oh, you have a witness, okay. I wanted to know if you guys were there.
We ate food.
We did, yes, they. Everybody, everybody knew that, that Weed, California was represented at the Cal Cities Conference.
Cause Bob's tall and has gray hair, that's great.
That's it.
And Sue is very quiet.
I thought it was the shirt that he wore. And what did he do, speak up all over the place or what? Okay, she did, didn't she? Yeah, she did. Tim?
All right, uh, we're gonna try and make this short and sweet, we're getting spoiled, it's only like seven thirty, but we're, uh, I know everybody wants to go home, but.
I had breakfast, it's okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna, real quickly.
Another half hour.
So real quickly, there was a lot of discussion on how can we get our community more involved? Um, the mayor and I have talked about it before, typical council meeting, you may have one or two people that will come here that.
They left.
And they've already left. And so I have done some research and, uh, actually talked to these folks. It's, it's, it's a group, uh, I believe they're out of Vermont, but they're called Community Heart and Soul. And I just got two quick little videos, I wanna show you like a couple of minute videos. One is a mayor from a small town, about like ours. And another one is from a lady who went to some of these, um, meetings and decided that she wanted to volunteer in her community and make a difference and it, it all derived from this. So this is a recruitment tool as well for future councils, planning commissions, those type of things.
Testimonial.
A little bit, yes, and there's a, there's a, uh, some seed grant money that's available that a- after we get done here, uh, I'd like to, you know, request to go forward and, not in a formal way, but just to go forward and, and apply for the grant and look at some other options too, but I, I'm gonna turn it over to, is it Nathaniel? Nathaniel, go with, uh, the, uh, the first video, the one from Maine.
Community Heart?
Yeah, there, there's two of them.
You, community leaders?
The, the, the first one, yep. Yep.
That's how I want the arch to look when we're done, right?
My name is Patricia Hart and I have the honor of serving as mayor of Gardner, Maine. In the Heart and Soul process in Gardner, I was the chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And early on I was the chair of the Planning Board and then I, um, ran for council. I think the benefit of Heart and Soul to the Comprehensive Plan process has been the rich input that we were able to get from community members. We went from neighborhood to neighborhood, area to area and got input from folks who live and work in those areas and folks who really care about those areas. And then we're able to put it all together to have the whole picture of, uh, our vision for Gardner. And we use that input to not only craft the Comprehensive Plan, but then to craft the ordinances that needed to be changed. So throughout the city, we have new ordinances that encourage different kinds of development in various areas. And it all reflects the vision of the community. Our Heart and Soul statements are on a big plaque on the city council chambers. And they are very frequently referred to, especially when the city council is handling contentious issues. It does two things, one, it reminds us what our community is looking for. But it also helps us show how we're more alike than we are different, that we do agree on, on these Heart and Soul statements and that they are our shared vision for the city of Gardner. We have so many different projects going on here where community members have just run with an opportunity. We have a group restoring fish, uh, to the Kavasie Stream and they are getting actually international attention for the work that they're doing. Johnson Hall is being renovated, our Performing Arts Theater. Summer concerts every Friday night down in our beautiful waterfront park. We have the Rotarians building new picnic tables. And this is all because people are working together and people see the value of pitching in and doing their part and being proud of the community. It's a gift that keeps on giving. I am so proud that this community came together and really built community engagement muscle. We started in a place where people were quick to point out what was maybe wrong with Gardner and not really get involved to make change and now it's second nature to us. People point out what needs to be done, they look for opportunities and they step up and, and lead the way, it's, it's really remarkable. For the mayors out there and the interested community members, I would encourage you to explore the Heart and Soul process. It really gives you easy-to-use tools that help you engage the community. And once that community is engaged, there's no stopping them. You'll see more economic development, you'll see more people moving into your community and you'll just be a stronger community for it, so trust the process and stick with it. Play the long game, you won't regret it.
This next one is a young lady, this next one is a testimony from a young lady that I talked about that started the volunteer movement.
My name is Starday Shapul, and I am a Community Heart and Soul member in Wingsport, Pennsylvania. I'm a single mother of five, um, ages ten, eight, seven, and twenty-six-year-olds. I, I moved here eight years ago, and I didn't know many people. Pretty much at that time, I was a ma- a domestic violence survivor, and pretty much struggling with no confidence, a lack of confidence. I had a lot of dreams and goals, but I couldn't figure out how to get them accomplished, or how to even start. My journey is, I started as a Community Heart and Soul volunteer, and I got offered an opportunity to tell my story, and everything pretty much blossomed from there. And I, I feel like I know most of the city now, just from not being afraid to engage in my community, and just take a part. So, from telling my story and being involved with Community Heart and Soul, I've gained so many skills and connecting with people, I have found empowerment and ownership. Um, I'm now a school board director, um, this is my second year, so I'm learning a lot, I'm so interested and excited to see where else I can help my community. Um, I'm a facilitator for Alternatives to Violence, um, I work with so many organizations, and my main goal in all of them is to take what I learned from Community Heart and Soul, and apply it in my everyday life, and apply it in my community. And all you need to do is get out there and let people know that it's there, and that's what Community Heart and Soul really taught me, and empowered me. I have so many goals, so many things going on, to where I feel as though we can conquer the world, the world is ours, there's so many things we can do together as a community, all, um, working for one common goal.
So, so, I, I guess, uh, what I'd like, I'll just wrap this up, um, th- they have, it's a four-step process, it's, it's like a two-year thing, it's not like they come in and spend a, you know, a couple of Tuesday nights, and it's done, and you go put it on a shelf somewhere, and it collects dust. That's not what we want, that's not what we need, and, you know, I've talked to, uh, many of you about, you know, the, the lack of engagement we have in this community, it's tough, it's, it, it is tough trying to get people engaged, um, but like they said earlier, you know, there's always people wanna come out and complain about what's wrong, and then they just leave, and then they don't wanna, you know, and this is a, a, a part where I think, like I said, going into the neighborhoods, and having, you know, community meetings and meeting with these folks, just like that young lady, moved into town, didn't know a soul, and decided to, to get engaged, and now she's the, the school board director. I mean, what, what a remarkable story, and I think that is something we can achieve here, uh, i- it's just gonna take a different mindset, um, this is just one avenue to do it, but I think this could be the, uh, the, the building blocks to do something like that, and, and, uh, like I said, I would just like to move forward with the grant application, and-
They have grants?
They have a seed grant to get it started, but there's, you know, there's some other cost involved, this is not, it's not cheap, so it's gonna, it's gonna take, s- take some, some funding, some investment, but I, uh, I was talking to Ken earlier, I'd like to, uh, approach maybe the, the Ford Foundation, the McConnells, and, uh, and, and talk to them about it, because that's, it's a direct impact for them too. I mean, you look at Roseburg, you look at, uh, Crystal Geyser, they need to be chipping in on this too, because it's gonna directly affect them, because if they have employees that are engaged in a community that's growing and thriving, versus employees that are in a community that are, you know, apathetic and don't care, then those employees eventually are gonna leave, and go, you know, go find a job in another community where they feel like it's more, there's more of an engagement, so, um, and I'm not being negative about Weed, but I'm just saying, it, in order for us to get more people engaged, I think we're gonna have to take a bold step forward, so-
Here's the way I, 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 when I talked with Tim about it, what came to mind was, we did a resiliency study, we've done a general, new general plan, we have done this study, I can't remember if it was called Salesforce, or something that we did on, all three of those are sitting on a shelf. We engaged temporarily, but we didn't fully engage any of the concepts, so that's where they sit, gathering dust. S- so, that's where they sit, gathering dust. Um, I think, through, this is a facilitator-driven project, my experience through facilita- facilitator-driven projects has been very positive. When we engaged Siskiure Revitalization Network, that was a facilitator-driven process. Ford Foundation hired somebody to come and help us join all communities in, in this county. Now, COVID did interrupt that process, but I will tell you that it brought a lot of members together that never, I would've never saw in the same room. Uh, in fact, I remember one distinct opportunity when we invited, we would have quarterly big meetings, that we'd invite the general public and have some larger topics, and we invited, uh, the, the trail, people that were involved with trails and, and making trails, and we got all these people together, y- you know, the, the fact was, four of them were in Mount Shasta, and they did not even know each other existed. It was pretty phenomenal that you live in such a, a small community, but be, has very large distances between each member. So, this SRN is a big example of facilitator-driven project. Another one, we hired a, a facilitator to be, uh, for the Community Resource Centers. We started off, when we broke off Weed to a new center, we joined with Mount Shasta, because we needed a nonprofit to share with, that worked so well that we decided that all of us together would be stronger, so we used a facilitator, and a half a million dollars, by the way, uh, from the Ford Foundation, to get us there. Uh, and we learned a lot of lessons on the way, one of the lessons was that if you're hoping for a hundred percent participation, good luck with that. So, you go with, with as much participation as you can to build a movement forward, and with, with those tools, and with those people guiding us, you develop a successful agency. Uh, I'm, I know the city of Weed, and in particular, the, the people of Weed have a lot of pride, you can see it in the things that they do. Uh, one of the biggest places you see it is in the, their, their high school awards program, their, uh, their, what is it, their, like, their Hall of Fame, and their sports programs, just ongoing today, we mentioned the sports program at least once or twice today, in today's little thing. Um, I think if we can develop, this, my feeling, and I think along with Tim's, is if we can develop something that people can, can join to, I think that's where we, we lack. Um, it, it does get frustrating that we don't get anybody, and I was just giving a speech at, with, at Gamma New, which is retired teachers, in Mount Shasta, and, and the questions that came forward were mostly about Mount Shasta and Dunsmere, and very little from Weed. I, I did engage them a bit, but it, it was a struggle to engage, I had probably a quarter of the questions, um, but I did learn some things about how, in speech giving, on the strengths of Weed, so, and I think that's where we need to, to focus, we have a lot of strengths, are we Mount Shasta? Absolutely not. Are we Dunsmere? Absolutely not, we're not McCloud, but we have our own identity, and we need to find that identity with our citizenry, so, that, I'm off my wagon now, but, but I think we need this.
When we were at the CAL Cities, in, there in the basement, they have the, all the people with all their stuff, there is a group called Just Serve, it's justserve.org, and they are trying to get, you can go on to their website and, um, put in things in your location that need volunteers, and I mentioned it at a Rotary meeting, and they are, Rotary is already talking with them, teaming up with them for volunteer things, not to replace what you just had, but just to add to it.
Sure. If you look at this brochure, it will, it, it will teach us on how to create that, Rotary already has a good idea. I mean, Rotary has been here a lot, I, what I listened to last night, even at the Lola meeting, was everybody trying to, to garner a little corner of cash, and a little corner of, how do we get things done? Uh, Waireka has a gr- they spent a hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars on a plan for a swimming pool, that's just, at this point, gathering dust, and they're hoping to, to figure a way on how to make that work. Something like this could make it work, because you find a path to get there. Uh, these people are paid, so it costs money, but they're worth every dime you pay them, because that's their job.
Yeah.
Um, so-
Well, I, I, I will approach them, uh, about their seed money, and then I will also be in touch with a couple of the foundations, and, uh, report back, uh, to this body, so-
I agree with it, I, and I honestly think, the, the first step is to admit we don't know how to do it, the reason we don't do, we're not gathering, we don't know how.
Mm-hmm.
As a community, we don't know how, and, and hopefully, uh, we can learn how to do it. It's not because we're inept, we don't know how.
We do it, we do it at certain places, we do it at the Hall of Fame, we, we do it at the, at Weed Football, Weed Basketball, we do it there, it's just we do not do it anywhere else, it seems, as if, and if we, I would say also, there are a number of volunteers that we need to recognize, that we don't ever recognize, there, there's people that are volunteering at a church, they're volunteering in, in their community for youth sports, but we need to recognize that, and need to understand that they're also part of us.
Sure.
And, and so, it's, it's a unit.
I, I think it's also real important, and the last note on this, real important to understand our community, our community is diverse, okay? We're diverse, and we're in tribes, we are in, you know, we're, we're, we're in different groups, and I, you know, um, someone said, Ken says something about the T-shirt that, that I wore down in Sacramento, and every time, people would come up and ask me about this T-shirt, the diversity, what, what it was about, and as soon as they'd ask me, my cohort here would jump in and say, "We have the most diverse small community in, in, in California," and then it went to the, in the nation. In the nation, yes, but it, that, we are diverse, our, we, one of our issues that we have to do is bring the different factions together, you know, and I think, I think we're on the-
Well, I, I just went to a, a conference too, and when people would see, you know, Weed, California, first thing they'd say, "Is that really a name?", and I'd tell them, "Yes," and then I'd tell them where we're located, and then I would talk to them about the diversity, and their eyes would like, light up, like, "What?", because they, I mean, they think, you know, up in the mountains, snow, that type of stuff, and they're, they're thinking, and when I talk about our Laotian population, our African-American population, they're, they just go, "Wow," I mean, it, it blows their mind, because they don't see that as, uh, uh, what their expectation of a small mountain town would be, so, anyway, you're right.
I, I thi- I think, uh, I was watching the news, I can't remember, it was a couple weeks ago, in the city of Ashland, or it was in Met- it might've been Medford, they had the 30th Annual Cultural Fair. Did you anybody see that little thing, the bl- it was, it was a blurb on TV, I mean, less than probably sixty seconds, but it's the 30th, I mean, I'm going-
Our elementary school used to do that.
We need to do that c- community-wide, because it's one of those things that we need to learn to celebrate. Uh, Bob and I, and Darryl went to the celebration for the, for the Louder Restaurant, immersed ourself in their culture as best as, as we could, anyway, definitely, but, huh? We danced, and, and that's, you know, I got two left feet, and Bob's got two right, and he's got two arms, no, I'm just kidding, I-
Darryl's got the rhythm.
So, I think it's there, the, the, the building blocks are there, we just need to learn how to put them together.
Yeah, true.
So, I don't know if anybody else has anything to offer, but with that-
Make a motion to adjourn?
My second.
All in favor? Aye.
Sandy, don't leave me, please. Would you, um-
Yes.
This one hit, oh, I'm, I'm loading. Huh? Since I'm adjourned, and you, and you were the one that was doing all the time, because you did, Ken says about the shirt, and you, oh, no, you, you were wrong, right?
Yeah, no, I am, I am a-
How many people are we talking to about?
I am a cheerleader.
Yeah, but how many people that we actually talk to?
Wait a minute.
Twenty?